In order please.
I can't get it through the order.
Supervisor Hess, would you lead us in an invocation?
Please bow your heads. Father, a few short weeks ago, as the leaves turned the brilliant colors of fall here in beautiful Frederick County, we were reminded of the beauty of your creation, and we thank you for all the blessings you bestowed on us. We're especially thankful for the opportunity to live in this great nation, where we enjoy the many freedoms provided for in our Constitution. And on November 5th, we were particularly reminded of the freedom to elect our leaders. We know that these freedoms do not come without sacrifice. Heavenly Father, hold our troops in your loving hands. Protect them as they protect us. Bless them and their families for their selfless acts, for the selfless acts they perform for us. Father, make us more deeply aware of our heritage, remembering not only our rights, but also our duties and responsibilities as citizens. And Father, we ask that you guide our discussions and our deliberations here tonight, so that our words and our actions might be pleasing to you. In your heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Vice Chairman DeHaven, would you lead us in the pledging allegiance?
Stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adoption of the agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There are no changes.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A motion by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The agenda is adopted. Consent agenda, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd offer the following tabs. Tab E, Parks and Recreation Commission Report. Tab G, Public Works Committee Report. Tab H, Joint Finance Committee Report. And tab R, various road resolutions.
Questions, Mr. Riley? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Supervisor Fisher, and a second by, did I hear something down there?
Well.
Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The consent agenda is approved. Citizen comments. Mr. Riley, did anyone sign up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have two individuals, the first of which is Mark Reagan, from Clearbrook, Virginia, to speak on the Carmuse waiver.
All right, would you come forward, please? Give your name, Magisterial District, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, Chairman. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Hess, Mr. Wells, Mr. Collins, Fisher, and Mr. DeHaven on your election on November 5th. Good job. My name is Mark Reagan, and I reside in the Stonewall District, directly across Route 11 from Carmuse, is Stonewall Elementary School. There are over 500 students attending this school. Twenty-five students there have asthma. One of those 25 students is my daughter, Jackie. There are adults at the school who also suffer from asthma as well. I'm shocked that no parents of Stonewall Elementary were notified by the school board about this application, or the previous application in 2011 for the expansion of the quarry. I have given out handouts to the supervisors, showing a sample part of a pamphlet handed out to some of the residents of Clearbrook at an earlier Carmuse meeting, stating that the limestone meets the requirements for human consumption. To me, this pamphlet has very misleading data. Safety data sheets were not given to the residents at the meetings with Carmuse. However, they are available online at the Carmuse website. I handed out a safety data sheet to our supervisors. On the sheets, they indicate that breathing and consumption of the lime is not such a good idea at all. Because of that, I questioned the safety of the kiln emissions. I call on the county to motion for denial of this application in order to give time, and you probably will need about a year, install at the Stonewall Elementary, an air pollution monitor, or what is called a continuous ambient monitor, like the monitor being used at Frederick County Maintenance Facility, maintained by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. That monitor at that maintenance facility is too far away from the quarry to be used to monitor the school and the surrounding area. It would be then best, it would then be the best to have the results reviewed by Department Environmental Quality and EPA officials, and have those officials explain face-to-face their findings to all the Clearbrook residents, also the parents and teachers of Stonewall Elementary. Again, I call for the unanimous denial for this application to give ample time to monitor the environmental impact of this project. I recommend everyone go online to a search engine and type, type in the phrase "living next to Rock Quarry." It's really frightening what you'd read. You can vote for this tonight, or you can vote for this tonight. It should be pretty easy to decide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and fellow supervisors. Have a good evening.
Next, Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Don Butler, from Stevenson, Virginia, to speak to the Carmuse waiver.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mr. Riley, and Frederick County staff, my name is Don Butler. I reside at 120 Buccaneer Court, Stevenson, in the new Snowden Bridge subdivision in the Stonewall District. I appear here this evening to discuss the proposed waiver for Carmuse to increase the height limit from 45 feet to 200 feet to erect a structure at its plant in the Stonewall District. First, I would like to thank Carmuse for being in Frederick County. Its tax revenues help homeowners like me have one of the lowest real estate tax rates in Virginia. I would like to make some comments and ask a few questions about the waiver. The Winchester Star ran an article on November 7th stating that the planning commission voted nine to nothing to recommend the approval of the waiver. The Star said that there was no public comment. The recommendation would be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors the next week. How can there be public comment when most of the Stonewall residents didn't know about the Carmuse request? A waiver does not require public notice. The only way would be to check the agenda of the planning commission. After five years of recession, checking the planning commission agenda is not the hot button it was 10 years ago. I don't think the Stonewall residents have had much opportunity to comment. I think a waiver to increase the height from 45 feet to 200 feet is pretty significant and should have had a little bit more public notice. I offer my apologies to Carmuse if they did have a public meeting with area residents to discuss the 200-foot height waiver, which I may not have attended. It is my hope tonight that the review is informational, with a vote coming in the future that would give Stonewall citizens time for comment. My concerns about the structure itself boils down to two questions. How will it be lighted, and how much additional train traffic will result from the increased production? Will the lights be internal or external? Other than the required lights for air traffic, will the lights be on 24/7/365? Trains? I use the rumbling and the whistle of the 5:15 a.m. train as my alarm clock. I may not want to hear it at 2:00 in the morning. Has Carmuse done a study on how many more trips a day the train may make, or how many more additional cars? My last question, what does a waiver really mean? If approved, is it time-sensitive to be built by a certain date? Would it allow Carmuse to build a second 200-foot structure in the future as a matter of right? Does the waiver run with the land? If Carmuse sells its business, would the waiver transfer to a new owner? I thank you for your time and the opportunity to appear before you tonight.
Anyone else, Mr. Riley?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Are there any Board of Supervisors' comments? Our hearing done, we'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting October 9th.
Chairman, may for approval is submitted?
A motion to approve by Supervisor DeHaven, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The regular minutes of the regular meeting October 9th, 2013 are approved. Next, we have an introduction of the new Hanley Regional Library Director. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Chairman, for inviting me tonight. I just wanted to come and say hello, and see my face, and thank the community for being so welcoming. It is surprising how nice people are out here, and how welcoming everybody has been. Thank you, Mr. Riley, for introducing me to Frederick County. It is my hope to help elevate the library in Frederick County, to get more people in there, to get the word out of all the work that we do in the community to the people, so that they can come in and use them. I mean, we're here, and we're doing our job. I just want to get more people in, so. You guys have any questions?
Where was the last? Where did you move from?
Oh, I live in the northwest Loudoun County, and I spent 11 years in Loudoun County prior to the year, at various levels of management there, and worked for FFRDC before that, for the federal government. And then I was in a restaurant business before that, which is an awesome business, if you'd like, so.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for coming to visit with us.
Thank you, sir. I'm much obliged.
It's time to do so, sir. Next, we have another introduction, the new Shenandoah Area Agency on Aging Director.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. My name is Kathy Galvin, and I'm the new Director of the Shenandoah Area Agency on Aging. Many of you have seen us in the paper a lot over the last few years, but I want you to know that things are turning around. We're going to be in good shape to continue to provide services to older adults. We are seeing, just so that you know, a lot of people wanting to retire to Frederick County and to Winchester. And as a matter of fact, TV3 is going to be talking to me and to some other folks in the community about the draw, why people are retiring here. It's really one of the top spots for retirement, as cited by AARP and some other established publications, so I think you should feel really good about the services that you're providing to older adults. I did want to quickly mention that we're seeing a particular increase in need for medical transportation, and we are meeting that need. And although people think we only provide services to low-income people, that's not true. If you have Alzheimer's disease, it does not care if you're a millionaire or if you're low-income, you know, you still can get the disease. So I want you to know that we're here. We're going to be providing lots of services to older adults, and trying to keep them in the community, so they can help the community remain as vital as it is today. And I am happy to answer any questions that you have. Do you have any questions?
You know, I'm going to ask you where your last place was before you came here.
I was actually, believe it or not, here and worked with Mr. Riley in the 1990s, and they've brought me back. I was in the Harrisonburg area, so I'm just down the road, so. Are there any other questions? I'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for your support. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Committee appointments. Mr. Riley, I think is giving us, advising us of the first one? Can we vote on that?
Let's see, I'm one tad ahead of you.
It is the grievance panel. Is that for information only?
That, I do need to be appointed by the Board. We have some vacancies, and these two gentlemen have agreed to serve.
Mr. Riley has brought forth the name of Malin R. Majurov?
Yes.
Got it? Okay. And Dale T. Mesa, to serve on the Frederick County Grievance Panel. What is the pleasure of the Board? Move for approval, Mr. Chairman? We have a motion by Mr. Fisher to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. These two gentlemen are appointed to the Frederick County Grievance Panel. Next is the Community Policy and Management Team. I believe we're waiting on a recommendation on that.
Yes, sir.
Parks and, let's see, Extension Leadership Council, Shawnee, are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Parks and Recreation Commission, Stonewall, I believe we are ready.
We are ready, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased to nominate Mr. Randy Carter.
We have a motion to appoint Randy Carter. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Randy Carter is appointed to Parks and Recreation Commission. Board of Zoning Appeals, Shawnee.
Not ready, Mr. Chairman.
Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. Our current serving supervisors are Chuck DeHaven and Robert Hess, terms expiring 12/31. My assumption is that they would be willing to re-serve.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the Board?
So moved.
We have a motion by Supervisor Lofton to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Congratulations, gentlemen. Industrial Development Authority of Peckham District. Are we ready?
Pardon? I'm sorry.
Peckham, Industrial Development Authority of Peckham, we may or may not be ready for...
I'm not ready. It's his time. I'm sorry.
Planning Commission, Stonewall.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd nominate that Gary R. Oates be reappointed.
All right, we have a motion to appoint Mr. Oates. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Gary Oates is reappointed to the Planning Commission, and then we have Redbud. We ready?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I have not received phone calls back, but they've indicated, I have not heard back from them specifically, but I'm not quite ready. I'll be right next meeting.
I guess on both of them?
On both of them. They...
That's fine. And then, Mr. Riley, were we able to get a hold of the Winchester-Fredrick County Economic Development Commission?
Yes, sir. He's willing to serve.
Mr. Galladay is willing to serve. We got a hold of him today. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd nominate, do we reappoint James W. Galladay Jr. as Frederick County's Business Representative?
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. James W. Galladay Jr. is reappointed to Winchester-Fredrick County Economic Development Commission. The committee reports. Next is a request from the Commissioner of Revenue for refunds. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated September 6, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund BMW Financial Services NALLC, the amount of $4,484.10 relating to vehicles sold or moved out of the state for 2010, 11, 12, and 13. The refund includes personal property taxes and registration fees due to proration. This is pursuant to 58.13981A Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. This approval should provide the authority to the finance director to have a supplemental appropriation to cover the refund request presented tonight.
Questions, Mr. Riley?
Chairman, I have one question.
Supervisor Lofton?
What's the look back on these taxes? How far can we go back?
It's three years from the last completed tax year, including that year, so 10 is allowed still.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Our approval should be for the refund and the appropriation.
Yes, sir.
What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move for approval.
We have a motion to approve by Supervisor DeHaven. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on, Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county attorney is in receipt of the Commissioner's request dated November 1, 2013, to authorize the treasurer to refund GE Capital Auto Lease, the amount of $3,293.22 relating to vehicles sold or moved out of the state for 2010, 11, 12, and 13. Refund includes personal property taxes and registration fees due to proration. And again, this is pursuant to the provisions of Section 58.13981A Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, and also, again, to provide the authority for the finance director to have supplemental appropriation to cover the refund.
Questions, Mr. Riley? All right, again, the motion, if it's to approve, should include the refund and the appropriation. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
By Supervisor Lofton to approve, a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor DeHaven. Any discussion? Hearing on Supervisor Wells.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is the Business Friendly Report, the committee report. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board will recall, at the July 10, 2013, meeting, the Board of Supervisors voted to accept the report from the Frederick County Business Climate Assessment Citizens Committee. At the August 14, 2013, meeting, the Board forwarded the Phase 1 recommendations to the respective committees and departments for evaluation. The Phase 1 recommendations were: Public Information Officer, signage along major routes entering Frederick County, establishment of an Economic Development Authority, review and evaluation of the master development plan process, simplification of the landscape ordinance, and reduction in proffer requirements. This memo, excuse me. This memo transmits the committee's respective recommendations on the following. Public Information Officer. The Human Resources Committee considered this item at its October 4, 2013, meeting. After some discussion, the committee recommended approval of the creation of the position of Public Information Officer. The creation of this position would make it eligible for funding consideration during the upcoming budget cycle. Establishment of an Economic Development Authority. The Winchester-Fredrick County Economic Development Commission established a work group consisting of county residents and/or individuals who have a business within Frederick County. The committee recommended the existing Industrial Development Authority be converted to an Economic Development Authority. The attached memo outlines the additional steps needed to facilitate this conversion. It is important to note that no action by the General Assembly or change in the state code language is required to change the name of the Industrial Development Authority to the Economic Development Authority. However, a state code change would be required if the Board desired to put a member of the Board of Supervisors on the Economic Development Authority. Reduction in proffer requirements. The Development Impact Model Oversight Committee conducted a reevaluation of the current development impact model, taking into account current economic conditions. The committee discussed the possibility of offering credits for proffered transportation improvements above those typically expected to address transportation impacts. Ultimately, the committee recommended approval of a policy modification to enable credit for transportation. You see the attached. It is further noted in the report that the committee would continue to reevaluate the model to see if further modifications would be appropriate. Those additional study areas would include tax contributions that may result from new residential development, tax contributions that may result from new commercial development associated with a residential development proposal. Staff recommends that the Board hold a work session in the future to discuss and review the committee's proposed recommendations, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Riley, is it your intent that this be an information-only report?
Yes, sir. With a work session to follow, because I don't think it would be fair for the Board members to be able to digest this and comment on it this evening.
On that subject, would not, as written, the committee need to complete its recommendations before we set, before we, the meeting that we set?
I think these, the proffer requirements, the EDA/IDA issue, and the Public Information Officer are ready to go to work session.
Okay. Do, you've included two topics. Stay on the proffer requirements. Is it your thinking that the committee would consider, as it says here, the other three items, and they would get that done before we meet, or?
Yes, sir.
Then we really can't do what's recommended here?
Right. The...
It would be us that'll be discussing it.
Yeah, the intent would be to discuss the first revision of the impact model, which is the transportation credit.
I think we probably should make that clear to them, then I'd hate for them to come up with one set of conclusions, and we do a work session, another, and the two collide.
Right. It would just be the transportation credit that we would discuss at our first work session.
That's all you discuss, then?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Then you would, what we would do, another work session later for the rest?
Yes, sir. You're going to be in probably quite a few work sessions as these recommendations come forward from the Business Friendly Committee, but I'm assuming that that would be the format you would like to discuss it in.
I think I'm fine with the work session there, but then when you included the EDA, I guess I was hoping that tonight we could authorize you to pursue the legislative changes and not have to wait for a work session. Not saying we'd create it, but the ability to do so. The sooner I think this Board says that's where they want to head, it seems like it'd be productive.
Okay, we can do that.
That too. Do you think we need to have a work session on that?
No. I think what you would have the work session on would be the duties and functions of the new EDA.
I'd like to have it in the minutes with a vote, that we've asked you to pursue legislative capability of creating the EDA.
That would be appropriate.
What the rest of you think? I think we need to do that.
Mr. Chairman, as I understand it, there are two scenarios for creating an EDA. One requires legislative action, one does not.
Yes, sir.
So are we, at this point, if we're saying we want legislative action, are we then...
I want us to pick a course. I probably had a bias, but I want us to pick a course. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Whatever it is, Mr. Riley has to pave a road to get there, and one requires some legislative activity. So we could talk about whether we wanted a board member on the EDA tonight and pick a path. But I'd like for us to get started on those ones that take a long time to get unwound. Does anybody have an opinion on whether you want to have a board member sit on the EDA?
Mr. Chairman, just, not to answer your question quite yet, but my understanding was that we had the authority to change the name, just not to appoint the board member. Couldn't we go ahead with our desire to create the authority and begin that discussion, and simultaneously seek the authority to add a board member? That we could do that, make that step at the point where we have the authority to do so from the legislature? Are there disadvantages?
I think Mr. Riley's answer is going to be yes, but I'll let him speak to it. What I wanted to do is get in our record someplace, that we wanted to have an EDA.
Yes.
We talked about it at Joint Finance and told the city that it would basically be coming up with the Board, and it's been informally discussed, but in no formal way. I didn't know until I saw this agenda that there was a different path for us to take. I thought we were going to have to go to the legislature now, but it might have been the first view. Mr. Riley, how can we record something tonight?
I believe Mr. DeHaven has a good suggestion to go ahead on the record to create the EDA, which you can do, and if it's the Board's desire to put a board member on the EDA, we can start that legislative process with our delegate.
Let me ask another question. What's been battered around is a July 1 date. Would we want to decide that now?
I believe that would be a fair date to get things together.
So the Board desires to create an EDA effective July 1, and we're not quite sure whether we'll have a board member as a representative, but Mr. Riley's going to pursue it. I guess if you got that approval, you wouldn't have to do it.
Correct. Yet, that was going to be my question. If we sought legislative authority to appoint a member of the Board of Supervisors, would that be mandatory? Would it be required?
I wouldn't think so, but I'm...
That's correct.
Presumably, the legislation the Board would request would make it optional, and I can't imagine the General Assembly would come back with something different.
So I think what I'm looking for today is agreement via a motion that an EDA be formed on July 1, either as a name change only, or with a legislative authority that will evolve later the capacity to put a board member on that body. And I would be content to have recorded the consensus of the Board. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, serving on that committee that studied the various models and scenarios for changing the IDA to an EDA, I think there's also some structural changes that take place in that either model that we choose. And I guess I want to make sure that everyone's aware of that, that there will be some structural changes, as we have proposed in both those scenarios or those models, that we are not doing now with the IDA, that is not in place with the IDA now.
Do you think that should alter what I'm trying to pull out of the Board, or just it's just-
I just want to make sure that-
You need to go in heads up.
Right. I just want to make sure the Board members go into that, knowing that there are some structural changes.
You're more intimately knowledgeable on the material than most of us.
Yes, and so, no, I think where we're going tonight is a good path to take, but again, I did want anyone to go into, with the understanding that it'd just be a name change from IDA to EDA, when in fact, there are going to be some structural changes with that model that we choose, if we say, go to EDA.
Either one of them as a new organization.
Yes.
Mr. Riley, any, any comments?
That was going to be my topic for the work session, so we could look at that in more detail then, and give the Board a comfort level of what-
Do you foresee anything in that discussion that would make us pull back?
No.
Okay.
It's just-
Mr. Lofton, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? I'm trying to get something in our, in our record here, and I don't want to do more than you want to do, but I really think it's important for us to... All right. Supervisor De Haven?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would move that we authorize staff to move forward with the creation of the EDA, and that we ask them to seek authorization from the legislature for us to choose either format.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Riley, is there anything you'd add to it?
No, sir.
From it?
No, sir.
Okay. Discussion. If I might have a voice vote on this, please. Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Mr. Riley, anything else on the update?
No, sir. We will try and reach consensus with you on a work session.
And that comes up later in the agenda, does it not?
Yeah, we may try and work it in with Mr. Lawrence's request for work session.
Okay. All right, moving on. Human Resource Committee. Supervisor Hess.
Mr. Chairman, the county's Human Resources Committee met on October 4. I might also note that the meeting that would normally have been held on November 1st was canceled. The HR Committee recommends adoption of two new HR policies. One is the Information Technology Usage Policy, and the second one is the Work for Hire Policy. Copies of those policies were included in your meeting packet. The Information Technology Usage Policy combines two old policies. The Acceptable Use Guidelines for Internet Services Policy was adopted in 1998, and, as you might imagine, is outdated. And the Security Acceptable Use Policy was adopted in 2004. The current proposal includes mention of all of the county's technology resources, including telephone, electronic mail, internet, et cetera, and outlines to our employees expectations of monitoring, retention, use, and privacy. And I would like to move that the Information Technology Usage Policy be adopted as recommended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no?
Mr. Chairman, the other policy was the Work for Hire Policy. It's new, and it addresses ownership rights of the county and its employees of copyrightable material produced within the scope of their employment. And I would like to hear my move that the Work for Hire Policy be adopted as recommended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Who is the second? Supervisor Wells. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no? The motion passes.
Next item was an item that we covered at least partially under the Business Friendly Committee. The HR Committee also recommends approval to create the position of Public Information Officer, so that the public, so that the position can be subject to funding consideration during the upcoming budget cycle. I understand that this position's been considered in the past, and it was also reported here earlier tonight under the Business Friendly Committee. When I, and probably many others here, that the title PIO, or Public Information Officer, I think there's a tendency to first think of providing information to the media, no What I think we need to be, to do is to be focused on providing information to the citizens of the county, and yes, giving information to the media may be part of that, but not necessarily the focus. I personally think that the citizen information, or, excuse me, the Public Information Officer ought to carry a title like Citizen Information Officer, or Community Information Officer, or County Information Officer. There are so many ways that people receive information today that they didn't in years past, the internet, social media, and various other means, and I think it's important that the county convey timely, consistent, and complete information to the citizens, and I think this is an undertaking that's far beyond a part-time responsibility for existing staff, and certainly, the committee recommends that this position be approved.
Perhaps we could work on perfecting. An approval, to me, would imply now, and it sort of reads like be considered in next year's budget, and we couldn't approve anything for next year's budget. Where do you want to go?
Well, it was my understanding that the position could be created, but not necessarily funded. However, if we're going to have this work session, I mean, maybe it's, it's worth waiting until after we-
If I translate that, you'd like to create the position and have the funding for it considered in next year's budget?
And maybe that might be a result of whatever discussion takes place at the-
I'm not trying to lead you, I'm trying to-
I understand.
Let's, let's get, get something on the floor here. Give it to me again.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion to create the position, if that's appropriate.
And what about the motion including that it be considered for funding in the next year's budget?
Okay, you lead me down that path, there I go, okay.
That's what it says here. That's what it says here. Is there a second to that motion? Does there need to be clarity?
I would second the motion. Mr. Chairman, I guess the only clarity I would ask is if Supervisor Hess has a preference on, on the title of the position. Probably settle that any other time. He has a preference.
I think Supervisor De Haven is saying that he would welcome the committee's continued work on what, what the actual title is.
That, okay, that not, not be included tonight, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Other discussion? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Chairman, although I see in the Business Friendly Committee report, there's a lot of anecdotal information in there stating why we need this position, but looking at the essential functions of this position, it appears to me there's overlap and duplication with some of the employees that we have right now, but I see nothing in here about how those other positions might be reviewed, as far as, are they still germane? Are they still needed? Should their duties be changed? So I can't realistically support that motion until after we've had that discussion at the work session.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, that, that was my question, that did the committee discuss if this could be incorporated into some existing county position, or in some other way incorporated, rather than just creating another position?
There was brief discussion of that, and we felt that there was enough contained in the job description that this would be a full-time position, and not part-time responsibility of someone who had other primary responsibilities.
Other discussion?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman. I think that we can have the discussion as we attempt to decide how we can fund such a position, as, as to what adjustments can be made or should be made in order to, to adopt a new position if we're going to, if we ultimately decide to do that.
Mr. Chairman, part of the, part of the discussion also was that there are several people in several departments that are doing aspects of this job, and in communication with those individuals, they have one person overseeing a lot of that, because we are doing a lot more social media, a lot more website, a lot more communication through that, through that means. I know that Parks and Rec would like to have a newsletter go out, but they don't have anybody to do that because there, of all these other jobs that are going on, so that this would free up a lot of their time, and we have, also, would also have one person to communicate with, instead of trying to go through the phone tree to find out who is going to respond to, to some, some issues. So it'd be, you know, a single individual that would handle all internal, or, excuse me, all questions being raised about county operations, and that's one of the reasons that we thought that this, one came up in the Business Friendly Agenda, but also, we think that there is a need for this position, and it does overlap, and there are people that would have to give up some responsibilities to this new position, but obviously, that's a, that's a conversation we'd have later, but the committee felt, and I think the conversation that we had within the committee was that there is a need for it at this particular point in time. It may not, we might need it today, but we're probably going to need it in very, very near future.
Other discussion?
Well, the only thing, hearing some of the comments, I mean, maybe it's appropriate to defer action on this until after the work session that, that discusses that. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I've got to make a confession here. When we're under paper agendas, I had my ranking of motions in front of me, and never thought to put it on the iPad, so I'm sitting here pondering, trying to remember whether a motion to postpone trumps a, a motion and a second for vote tonight. I believe it does, but I don't have my ranking of motions with me. Because the choices, if that's correct, would be to, to defeat the motion, to approve the motion, or to amend it, to vote on it at a subsequent meeting. Mr. Williams, you think I'm close, or do you, can you recall?
I think you're right, Mr. Chairman. I think the, the motion to postpone, in essence, is a motion to table for a-
Postpone is what I meant to say.
Certain trumps the pending motion to approve.
So those are your three choices I would offer you. We ought not to postpone if there's lack of, of support for some form of it. We should dispose of it. If there's enough support for it, it's, it's not a good thing to have a, a split board on. So you tell me where you want to go. Those are your three options, as I see it. We can vote, up or down, or we can talk about it again another day.
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate, I still am convinced that I can support this position, so I would move to postpone the vote, creating this position until after the work session, which I assume would be before-
Schedule?
Yeah, I was hoping we would just get it to work session. I wasn't looking for an action tonight.
All right, is that a motion to, an amendment to the motion?
If I can amend the motion to postpone, would there be a motion to postpone?
Mr. Williams, help me out here.
I think the motion's in order.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to postpone. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Chairman. Next meeting after the work session?
Yes.
We have a second by Supervisor Fisher. Supervisor Hess, do you think it gives you enough working time?
Oh, yeah, I don't have any problem with that at all. Certainly Supervisor Lofton raised some questions about the duties that currently reside in some job positions, and I don't have a problem getting that hashed out in a work
I will not, not have my motion order book in hand. This does leave the first motion hanging, which troubles me, Mr. Williams, I will admit to you. I think it would have been better to have amended.
Can I make a motion to, can I withdraw my motion, my original motion?
You want to get me out of trouble?
I hope so.
I'm giving him a line, trying.
All right, folks, we're going to start all over here. Mr. Tibbs, you just struck that. Mr. Hess.
Really, withdrawing the motion, I think that topic was already on the agenda for the work session. I don't know that a motion is necessary.
Mr. Chairman, I'll withdraw my second. I will, I will not object to him withdrawing his motion that I seconded.
You withdraw your motion?
If we're saying that withdrawing the motions, this goes to work session, and then we take some action, yes.
I, I agree with you. It ought to come back.
Fine.
All right. I don't know how proper I am, but Mr. Tibbs, could you handle that? No action was taken.
That's, that's the end of the HR Committee report.
I apologize for not being prepared for what might have happened there, and having the right stuff before me. We are down to finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance Committee met, first four conference room, on October 16. Item number one, which was a request for general fund supplemental appropriation for DMV highway grant for the sheriff, was approved under consent, and I would so move.
A motion to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Collins. Discussion. Hearing on all, is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no, the consent agenda is approved.
Finance Director requests a general fund supplemental appropriation, the amount of $1,526,665, and a school capital projects fund supplemental appropriation, in the amount of $800,882.79. These amounts represent one-time funding for capital purchases from the fiscal year 2013 year surplus. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
No.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The school finance director requests a general fund and a school operating fund supplemental appropriation, in the amount of $97,011.71. This amount represents designated funds received in 2013. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Chairman. Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
Commissioner revenue requests a general fund supplemental appropriation, in the amount of $1,377.50. This amount represents proceeds from the sheriff's sale to be used for vehicle repair and maintenance. No local funds are needed. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Lofton. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor House?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
The Assistant County Administrator requests a general fund, sorry, my screen moved, a general fund supplemental appropriation, in the amount of $17,765. This amount represents proceeds from the sheriff's sale to be used for building, repair, and maintenance. No local funds required. The committee recommends approval, and I so move.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion. Hearing on Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor De Haven?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes.
If I might, Mr. Chairman, just to comment for information, the Government Finance Officers' Association has awarded the county a Designated Budget Presentation Award for its fiscal year 2014 budget document. This is the 28th consecutive year that Frederick County has received this achievement. I just wanted to congratulate the Finance Director and her staff for the job well done again.
Would you like to put that in a motion this time?
I would, sir.
Been long enough, somebody ought to do it that way.
Absolutely.
Second.
We have a motion by Supervisor De Haven, and a second by Supervisor Lofton. Any discussion? I concur with the congratulations for what job well done.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posse no, the motion passes. Transportation Committee, I believe you're up again.
Yes, sir. Give me a moment to get there.
Transportation Committee met on October 28. There was one action item, the revenue sharing application. Previously, this project, which is the final draft application and map for the Snowden Bridge Boulevard, from Route 11, traveling eastward to a bridge over the CSX rail line, and stopping just west of Milburn Road. For information, previously, this project had been awarded $1.3 million in Economic Development Access Funds from the governor toward completion of this project. However, as the project continued to promote this project, changes in planning for the CSX rail line have led to the requirement of a significantly larger bridge and associated increases in cost.
And in partnership with the developers, the Greystone Development, it was determined that the project could be better supported through the revenue sharing program. And it should be noted that if this application is successful, the Economic Development Access funding previously allocated toward this project would have to be released since they cannot use both. So the Committee recommends support of the application for $4,033,350 in revenue sharing for that project, and I would so move.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion.
Clarification, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The motion was adoption of the resolution to formally support the revenue sharing application.
Agreeable with the second?
Yes.
Discussion. Hearing none. All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion passes.
The rest of the report was information only. Mr. Chairman, we'll formally deal with that priority list at a later date. Thank you.
All right, our next item is a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 6, Business and Industrial Zoning Districts. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This is a zoning ordinance amendment to increase the height allowance in the EM Extractive Manufacturing and the M1 and M2 zoning districts through the approval of a Board of Supervisors waiver. Now, the waiver option proposed would allow the Board to determine the appropriateness of a proposed height increase in a requested waiver in a specific location while providing an applicant with an irrevocable approval. Now, currently, in the EM district, the maximum height is 45, and the M1 and M2 districts are both 60 feet. Now, the waiver would allow the Board to waive the height in the EM district up to 200 feet, and the M1 and M2 districts up to 150 feet. There are also supplementary use regulations that were drafted that correspond with the waiver. First is that an applicant would need to provide architectural renderings for the structure. There's a statement that the Board can require additional buffer screening elements or additional distance when deemed necessary to protect existing adjacent uses. The Board can also require additional conditions as deemed necessary. And there's also a statement that the waiver cannot be used to increase sign height. The DRC discussed this back in September. The Board discussed this at your October 9th meeting, and then the Planning Commission discussed this on October 16th, and the Planning Commission held a public hearing at their November 6th meeting, and they do recommend approval. So tonight, we're seeking a decision from the Board on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment. I would be glad to answer any questions.
Questions to staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now conduct a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 6, Business and Industrial Zoning Districts, Part 601, Dimensional and Intensity Requirements. Section 165-601.02, Dimensional and Intensity Requirements, Part 608, EM Extractive Manufacturing District, Section 165-605.06, Height Limitations, Article 2, Supplementary Use Regulations, Parking, Buffers, and Regulations for Specific Uses. Part 201, Supplementary Use Regulations, Section 165-201.03, Height Limitation Exceptions, Part 204, Additional Regulations for Specific Uses, Section 165-204.28, Height Waivers in the EM Extractive Manufacturing, M1 Light Industrial and M2 Industrial General District. These are revisions to increase the maximum height in the EM, M1, and M2 zoning districts with a Board of Supervisors waiver, an addition of supplementary use regulations. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board members and staff. I'm Kristin Lays. I'm here in my capacity as the Executive Director of Belgrove Plantation in Middletown, Virginia, which is operated by Belgrove Incorporated and is owned by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Belgrove has a property that is directly adjacent to another Carmuse facility in Middletown, and so the ordinance amendment is something that we have a concern about. In looking with the language, I see that for the Section 165-204.28, that the requirements for a waiver request do not require public notice that a waiver has been sought. Is that, am I correct in that?
You usually don't answer questions, but that is true.
Okay, thanks, sir. Nor does it ask for a public comment or a public hearing for such a waiver request. And we would respectfully ask the Board of Supervisors to include such language specifically. Brought with me tonight a letter of concern from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that was emailed to the Board this afternoon. I have copies if you would like me to give you one. Thank you for considering my concern.
Would you give your letter to Mr. Tibbs, please?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Tonight, I ask you that you deny the revision in the amendment to increase the maximum height in the EM, M1, and M2 zoning districts. This would create eyesores and pollution and noise like you'd see in Martinsburg, West Virginia. This amendment were to pass, you would, it sounds crazy, but you need something add wording or a code that the residents of Frederick County be able to construct fencing at their property without needing a building permit up to 30 feet. That would be the same ratios we're trying to advance to tonight. This would block the unsightly structures and excessive noises that would be cropping up throughout the county. I call on my fellow supervisors for unanimous denial of this ordinance amendment. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. It was the pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Collins?
Can I ask a question of staff, just briefly?
Please.
I'm sorry, I found something under Article 2 with the 165-201.03, the exceptions to height requirements. Let you get there.
Closed on me a little while, so I have to excuse me.
It's page three of the
Okay.
The automated storage facilities in the OM, M1, M2 zoning districts, and automated manufacturing facilities, M1, M2 zoning districts, which is the Newt language. The last sentence, it says, "In no case shall the height of these facilities exceed 100 feet in height."
Yes, sir.
Okay, so even though we're changing the ordinance for 200 feet on everything else
That's a by right provision. So if an automated storage facility wanted to go up to 150 feet from 100 feet, they would have to come to the Board for that additional 50-foot allowance.
So that last sentence, that in no case shall the height, so I guess I'm confused.
It's meant to say that in no case shall a by right facility is the intent of that section, because currently, that's already a height exception included in the ordinance.
I guess I'm still confused about how I'm reading this. I guess when you say, so are we, is an automated manufacturing facility a different? I'm just reading the paragraph. I don't, I didn't see any preamble to that. That's the reason I'm a little confused, because it sounds like if we pass this, that if you put an automated manufacturing facility, and they come in and ask for a waiver for 200 feet, we still would not be able to do that. Is that?
A number of years ago, the automated storage facility was added into the ordinance to allow them to go from 60 feet to 100 feet, and it was, the text was stated that in no case shall they exceed 100 feet in height, because that was the maximum height exemption. Then we simply added the text to state, to also include automated manufacturing facilities as an additional component of this, and that would still cap the height exception at 100 feet unless the Board were to waive it up to 150 feet.
Okay, so even under, okay, so is there somewhere in here, there's a definition of what an automated manufacturing facility is?
No.
I don't, there's not a specific definition for those structures, but typically, it's the taller facilities that don't have a human component to the operation, such as employees on the floor in that area.
Okay, so, and I'm sorry, maybe I'm laboring this point, being the lawyer that I am, but in no case shall the height of these facilities exceed 100 feet in height, sounds like that this code section limits us to 100 feet. Am I missing something? Am I, is there a part I'm missing in the code that allows us to exceed that 100 feet if this is what the new ordinance we're passing?
Well, I think what Ms. Perkins is saying is, is the by right use is 100 feet, and we are including a waiver provision that if they choose to go above that, that's where the Board would enact the waiver to allow for it to go higher than 100 feet, but no higher than 200 feet, if I'm correct.
For the, the M1 and M2, up to 150 feet?
Right.
Right. Yes, sir.
I think we should go for clarity here if there's still questions in your mind. So I encourage you to pursue it.
And maybe I need the entire section in front of me to read it from, from cover to cover, but it looks from that sentence that how can we, in no case shall the height of these facilities exceed 100 feet? So what you're saying is that we are now adding, because what we're adding in to allow for a waiver, you're saying now we can ask for, they can ask for a waiver up to 150 But then you have in that, you said, "In no case shall any structure exceed 150 feet in height."
Mr. Chairman, could I offer something here that
Sure, absolutely, please, feel free.
If I'm getting at what Mr. Collins is talking about, if the wording was changed to the effect that, that these facilities be limited in height to 100 feet, and not say, "In no case," because you're, the waivers, I think I see what you're saying. It says, "In no case," which means eliminates the waiver. So if you just said that it would be limited to 100 feet and take out the wording, "No case," I'm just looking for that as a clarification.
Might even reference the waiver, if I was, if I could.
Are you, are you in tune to what?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I believe it's a matter of the wording of the sentence, and it could be modified to a minor extent, too.
And that's what I get paid big dollars for.
Agree with, with this interpretation of your concerns?
I do. It, it just, it just seems to me, it's, the sentence is a period, "In no case." And it, we reference a lot of things in here, reference the height, and then, but then we also have a couple sentences in here that say that, "In no case shall any structure exceed 150 feet," or exceed 100 feet, or exceed 200 feet. And it seems to me that we're talking about all the same items here. I understand that the premises that, we're talking about apples and oranges, I guess, but it, it just seems to me that we keep referencing in different locations, and it just, like I said, if I had the entire code section, I don't want, like I said, I don't want to belabor the point, and maybe I'm getting, I'm losing the force because of the trees.
Would it be helpful, sir, to change that text, that sentence, to say, "In no case shall the height of these facilities exceed 100 feet in height unless the Board of Supervisors approves a waiver?"
Mr. Collins, Chairman, if I may, to follow up on Supervisor Collins, am I correct in understanding that the 200-foot height only applies to EM?
That is correct. The M1 and M2 can go up to 150.
And then M1 and M2 are 150?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think clarification would be just tacking on unless the Board of Supervisors approves a waiver to the end of that sentence clarifies.
Following up with what Supervisor Lofton said, wouldn't you have to say unless a Board approves a waiver in the M1?
Well, the, this, the structure that Supervisor Collins is referring to only applies to the M1 and M2 districts.
M1 and M2?
Yes, sir.
And OM?
Correct.
Yeah.
But it doesn't reference the EM.
No, I see that there is a Okay, then I think that's, that, that I think I understand that. So I now understand what I'm reading.
Supervisor Lofton, were you, were you okay, or are you just trying to help him out?
I just want to make sure I was correct in my interpretation.
You there?
If he, I am, if Supervisor Collins is.
I had a related question, and that is, in that same section, 165-201.03, on page 3, paragraph 4, we have strike through in the sentence that required that could only be granted if the full sprinkler for fire protection. Is that a change that is being promoted with this change? Is that a prior change?
No, that, that's a change that, that we're bringing for with this one due to the fact that any structures that are complete have, have to meet all building and fire codes, so.
When you're referencing the introduction to this particular section, that is the change that you're referencing, the strike through?
Yes, that's one of the changes to that section.
Did Public Safety chime in on that?
No, we felt it was repetitive to be a part of the zoning ordinance, considering that any building has to already meet all of their specifications.
That works for me. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Now, we're back to what is the desire of the Board? I don't think we'd had a motion, did we?
What would be required to add some provisions for public notice or hearing as we heard from the public comments tonight?
We'll have to get Mr. Williams to chime in, but I believe it would be okay, because it's more prescriptive instead of less. Or did I get that backwards?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think you have it right. It's always a little touchy on these, because on the one hand, there's the issue of making it more restrictive. On the other hand, there's the issue of making the use of the land more intensive theoretically. But because it's proposed the way it is, I think you can add the public hearing requirement without running afoul of a problem there.
I think we got a blessing if you were to want to propose that.
And we do that without having a specific language here, or should we postpone action on this?
I think if you state your intent, it's, it's simple enough that staff can, can work it in. I think it's of that nature. Wanting a public hearing if a waiver is requested. I guess, can the Board have a public hearing, and Planning Commission not, or is it advisable to have a public hearing all the way through? The Board is approving the waiver based on a recommendation.
Probably most advisable to have the public hearing all the way through.
I, I think that's not, I think that's not complicated wording, but it's, it's your decision.
Mr. Chairman?
Just a, a public hearing will be held prior to approval of any waiver by the Board of Supervisors.
Period as a five.
We can work with that.
What's, what's your comfort level?
Yeah, I mean, I was just asking the question. I don't think we had a motion yet.
No, no.
I would support, I would support Mr. Hess's request, because I came here tonight thinking I was going to support this.
Yep.
This comment from Belgrove struck a issue with me that goes back to cell tower issues. I think without the public hearing part of it, I won't be able to support this.
Agreed.
And I guess the effect of that is that we have another agenda item later. If we put the public hearing in, and this item, next, the next item dealing with this, we won't deal with it tonight.
I'd say that was a fair assumption.
Well, that's my position, Mr. Chairman and the Board.
Do we have comments from County Administrator or County Attorney?
Mr. Chairman, if the desire of the Board is to add that provision, it can be added, I think, as a paragraph 5 of 165-204.28. However, the Board also does have a matter later on its agenda involving a waiver request under this proposed ordinance. And whatever ordinance the Board enacts is then going to govern the Board's handling of that waiver request. So if there's a public hearing requirement in that, then the Board's going to need to go through that procedure for that waiver request.
I think that was the question, and the answer is yes.
Yeah, hearing Mr. Fisher's comments, I think the concern applies not only to Middletown, Corey, but also comments we heard earlier for Clearbrook.
They can make that change later.
So what are we doing, we looking for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Just, just so we understand, we, we are looking at this is that any and all future waiver request, you would like this provision to be applied to all future requests, but not for the request tonight. Am I correct?
No, I think it would have to be for No, I think it would have to be for all of them. I mean, that's the way I heard the County Attorney interpret it.
Would you restate what you said?
Yeah. I'm thinking, if I understand the County Attorney correctly, if you would add this provision tonight, and you want it effective for this waiver for this subject tonight, we'd have to go back and conduct a public hearing to be able to do that.
Yeah.
I thought you said something different than that a minute ago.
I heard something different.
So, what I'm saying is, is I'm, is my understanding is, is we understand the desire of the Board to fix it, but you don't want it fixed tonight. Is that fair?
No, I'm not sure that, that, that's my position, because essentially, we have a waiver request under a code amendment that doesn't exist at this point, and it can't be considered until the code's amended. And once it's amended, I would think that would apply.
I think we're all on the same page here.
I think we are.
Like to, like to pull a motion out of somebody.
I'd like to move that the proposal be approved with the addition that the waivers be subject to a public hearing.
Second. Can you not?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Do we need clarification on the motion as second by County Attorney or staff, or is it clear enough?
So, we have to have a public hearing on each individual.
Waiver request.
Under this, on this section.
Under this section, not every waiver.
Yes, yes, under this section.
Mr. Chairman, so that the Board has complete understanding of it, if the Board passes the motion as Mr. Hess has stated it, that would mean that the item that's on the agenda later tonight would face the public hearing requirement. The Board would theoretically have the alternative option of passing the ordinance without Mr. Hess's language tonight, proceeding with that item later, and then coming back at a future time and amending the ordinance to include the language that Mr. Hess has suggested as an addition.
I, I think they were clear on the ramifications of the motion.
Yeah, I, I, I think so.
Does anybody know it? Okay. Okay. So, we have a motion as second, discussion. Motion apparently is clear enough that can be perfected with minor changes to the ordinance that would not require it to come back to us to meet intent. So, we're in discussion on that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think I heard you say before, are we talking about a public hearing at the Board level and not at the Planning Commission level, or both?
Mr. Williams said we would have both. That's, that's what is done. We don't have any where we only have a public, a public hearings at Board level that, I assume.
I thought waivers were only approved by the Board.
Okay.
Well, anything that, that gets a recommendation from Planning Commission, the Board is approved by the Board. Sometimes that gets a little bit mixed up.
That's what I'm saying.
It's always a recommendation coming to us.
But the approvals here.
No matter how the press reports it. Are we okay?
For that section.
Another discussion, and we'll vote. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. Next is another public hearing and ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 3, Transfer of Development Rights, TDR Program. Go ahead.
I want to abstain from this item for a potential conflict of interest, please, sir.
Have that recorded. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This ordinance amendment contains really three separate topics under the TDR amendments. First is a revision to the TDR density table. Second is a contiguous sending properties allowance, and third is a density right conversion rate, and I'll go through each of those separately. Revision number one, which is to the density table, now, this is a revision to bring the TDR density table maximums into conformance with the updated RP standards that the Board adopted back at your January meeting. As you may recall, the densities are now based on housing types and parcel size. There's also an increase in the RP allowable density when using RP, when using TDRs for development, as well as an increase to the RA, Rural Areas Permitted Maximum Density, when using TDRs to be consistent with the maximum RP density when using TDRs. Now, revision number two, which is for contiguous sending properties, this is a revision to include a minor addition that allows the use of a contiguous parcel for TDR transfers. Really what this means is when you have multiple properties under one landholding, you may have one primary parcel that meets all the requirements of the TDR ordinance, but you may have a contiguous parcel that's part of the same, for example, a farm, that may not meet some of the requirements, and we want to be able to allow all the contiguous parcels in a TDR application. Now, the third revision is the density right conversion rate. Now, this is a revision to include a conversion that would apply to density rights being applied to receiving properties. The conversion would be based on the type of housing unit being developed on the receiving property, which would be either single-family detached, attached, or multifamily. Now, the conversion, really what it states is that when you're using TDRs to develop a receiving property, one single-family detached dwelling unit, under the single-family detached dwelling, one TDR right would equal one single-family detached dwelling. If you're doing single-family attached, one TDR, it would equal one and a half single-family detached units, I'm sorry, single-family attached units. And under, if you're doing multifamily, one TDR right would equal 1.7 multifamily dwelling units. Now, I will note that these figures are based on the Development Impact Model output for the impacts of each of those types of dwelling units. Now, these revisions have been to a number of committees and discussed at many levels. Revision number one was discussed by the DRC back in April and the Planning Commission in May, and then revisions two and three went to the DRC at their July meeting. The Planning Commission discussed all three back in August, and then it was heard by the Board at your September 9th meeting and sent forward to public hearing. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 16th and November 6th, and they did recommend approval of the amendments. So, tonight, we are seeking a decision from the Board of Supervisors on these three amendments, and I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Questions to staff? I hear none. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now conduct a public hearing on an ordinance amendment to the Frederick County Code, Chapter 165, Zoning, Article 3, Transfer of Development Rights, TDR Program, Part 302, Sending and Receiving Properties, Section 165-302.01, Sending Properties, Section 165-302.03, calculation of development rights. Revision to the Frederick County zoning ordinance to update the TDR density rights table include a provision for contiguous lots and addition of a TDR density conversion rate for receiving properties. Is there anyone here who would like to speak either for or against this ordinance amendment? If so, please come forward, give your name, magisterial district, limit your comments to three minutes, please. Anyone?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, staff. I'd like to congratulate those members that were elected or reelected to your position. Thank you. My name is Bruce Carpenter, and I'm, and my wife, Kim, are residents and farmers and rural landowners in Gainsborough District. I'm also a director with the Frederick County Farm Bureau. The Frederick County Farm Bureau is a membership organization that promotes, educates, and lobbies on behalf of agricultural issues in Frederick County and is one link in the chain that comprises the Virginia Farm Bureau. We consist of 742 associate member families and 241 agricultural producer families. To vote on our board issues, you have to be actively engaged in agriculture and be a producer. The 241 producer members we represent are fortunate to control a large portion of the land that would be affected by this program and its changes as senders. The Frederick County Farm Bureau completely endorses the proposed amendments before you this evening. Frederick County Farm Bureau has twice passed by unanimous vote a resolution supporting the transfer of development rights at our annual meeting. We support the proposed changes being presented tonight, which we feel will add value to rural landowners looking to take advantage of the program. We feel it is a valuable tool for the rural, rural landowner to realize income from the properties without having to be forced to sell them to the highest bidder. Many rural landowners have looked at the value of their land as a retirement income or inheritance for their heirs. Without alternate avenues such as the TDR program, the only way to capitalize on this asset was to sell. With the proposed changes before you tonight, the TDR program has greater value to not only the seller or to the sender, but, has greater value not only the seller or sender, but to potential buyers receive or receivers looking to maximize density and thus develop, development profits within their urban development areas. With anything in a capitalistic society, value is established by its worth to the buyer. The higher the perceived and realized value is to the entity looking to accept TDRs, the greater the participation will be from those looking to sell or transfer TDRs. We feel the proposed changes to the program will not only add value and marketability to the TRs, but increase the potential success of this valuable wealth management, retirement, and estate planning opportunity. If it does, if it does not provide good value, it will not be successful. If TDRs are marketed properly, the sum of the sold or sending units plus the residual value for agriculture or recreational use could equal or exceed the traditional development values. The major factor prohibiting individuals from pursuing agriculture as a profession and a way of life is the cost. Thank you. Support it.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Paul Anderson. I'm president for the County Farm Bureau. Bruce did such a great job making a presentation on behalf of Farm Bureau. I'm here speaking as a landowner. My wife and I operate a farm. It's her family farm. Been in her family for over 130 years. We like keeping the family. Over the years, most farmers don't have retirement income. When they have some extra cash, they would buy land, increase the farming operation, knowing that when they got ready to retire, they could sell some land off and use that as retirement. Well, over the years, things change. It always does. And it's getting harder to harder through ordinances and regulations to be able to sell off pieces of land. What this program here has is the old adage of, "I can have my cake and eat it too," because I can still have the land. I can be able to pass it on to my family, my, my grandsons, and still farm it. And I think it's a great program. It's got some bugs that need to be worked out on it, but I think I can be taken care of. I think the program has a lot of merit, and I do encourage y'all to look at it closely and prove it. I've heard some comments that this has taken away the rights of the farmers to be able to use their land, and I don't see where that's any case at all, because this is a voluntary program. If I, as an individual farmer, my wife and I, don't want to take advantage of it, we don't have to. If we want to take advantage of it, then it's there, and I strongly support it. Thank you.
Anyone else? She knows. We'll close the public hearing. Any questions to staff? Pleasure, Board.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the amendments to the TDR as written.
We have a motion as a second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second, but Supervisor Lofton, discussion.
The only comment I had to add is that the County Board of Supervisors, back in 2009, adopted some core values for the county, and the second item on there is government concern with long-range planning that protects our rural heritage and directs its future growth through planned infrastructure. And it would seem to me that this ordinance clearly supports one of those core values.
Another discussion. Well, I, I must confess that I can't support it after an awful lot of thought, but I want it clear why I can't support it, and it has got nothing to do with the sending area. It's got to do with the receiving area and the change in use of that without a public hearing. I can't get beyond it. I've thought about it, worried about it. Everything else I'm okay with, but that piece I can't, I can't overcome. And so, I don't want that negative vote misunderstood as a, as a lack of support for the TDR program. Any other comments?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman, regarding your comment. Doesn't that same concern exist without this amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
It didn't come to my attention until we got there.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? We ready to vote?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if you're, as my motion to approve it, is that something that you'd like to look at more closely? I don't, there's no urgency.
I can't say. I don't know if there's a fix or not. I tried to articulate it as best I could, and I don't know. The timing of the purchase and the acquisition of the TDRs in order to go forward with your project contingent upon a public hearing and have, I mean, it's messy. Better people than me would have to put some thought into it and, and go down the path to see if it's indeed possible to, to let the public know that the change in the use of the land was, was being considered.
Mr. Chairman, to address your concerns, as was just clarified a minute ago, the problem exists without this amendment. This amendment doesn't, in a sense, make your concerns any greater.
It's more likely that, that there'll be participation than less likely with this amendment.
I see. Because certainly, I would have no problem with, with approval of this amendment or without approval of this amendment, looking into the whole TDR program to see if we couldn't address those concerns. There's no reason why we couldn't consider subsequent amendments down the road.
Mr. Lawrence, if I could tap you, do you think that it would be possible to inject a public hearing piece into this?
The, the, the challenge you would be faced with is the TDR ordinance by state law does not enable you to require a rezoning. So, if you held a public hearing.
I'm not talking about a rezoning. I'm talking about a public hearing on a change of use.
We, we could certainly find a, a manner to hold a public hearing, but by, by law, it has to be an administrative process. So, you could hold a public hearing, but you couldn't deny the TDR transfer. By ordinance, it's an administrative exercise.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Okay, any other discussion? Are we ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Okay. Supervisor Hess?
Aye.
Supervisor Collins?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven?
Abstains.
Supervisor Lofton?
Aye.
Supervisor Wells?
Aye.
Chairman votes no, but the motion passes. The ordinance is amended. Next item is a rezoning application, 05-13, Governor's Hill, request to revise proffers. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you may recall, the development on your screen was first rezoned as a mixture of commercial and residential property that had a major connector road which extended from what you now know as Coverstone Drive, where the Public Safety Building is, over to Sulfur Springs Road. Now, there was a subsequent rezoning prior to this one that adjusted that transportation infrastructure. That was a primary change at that time, which, to reflect more closely what you see on your screen, on the screen now, which took that intersection from Sulfur Springs Road, brought it over to Inverly Way. What you have before you tonight in, in terms of a, of a proffer modification is, is most, a couple of minor items and then one more significant item. So, I'll start with the minor items. The first of which is the removal of the evasion easement from the proffers, simply because that easement has been recorded and signed off on by Ms. Rennie Manuel from the airport. The other item you'll see, which is even smaller frankly, is updating of some references to the Armory Access Road to what is now known as Pendleton Drive, since the Armory has been constructed and that roadway is completed and has a name. Finally, to get to the more substantive change, Coverstone Drive itself was proffered to be completed in phases. You can't really see the letters too clearly on here, but you have an A, B, C, and a D delineating the segments. delineating the segments of that roadway that are tied towards specific development square footages. With the exception of they are currently able to develop up to 200,000 square feet of office space utilizing Coverstone Drive. Now, the way those proffers are written out currently, regardless of how much development has taken place, they are obligated to have made that construction happen by November of 2015. So what you have before you today is simply an adjustment of that date from November 2015 to November of 2025, simply recognizing the fact that with market conditions being what they are, nothing has really taken place, and they'd like to push those out rather than be in a, a situation of proffer default. An important note here would be that those, there are, as I noted earlier, there are footage, square footage triggers that bring forth the different segments of that roadway. So if for some reason, all of a sudden in 2016, 2017, they were to start having development and successes we'd like for them to have as a county, of course, those triggers would still be enforceable. You'd see the roads sooner. The 2025 is just kind of an extension of that drop dead date that regardless of if anything happens, you'll see the road. Now, I'll note, part of that proffer included a creation of a crossover with left turn lane. That is still to be completed in 2015. That, that is the one thing that your staff and VDOT felt like was needed sooner, so that's current, that continues to remain in the proffers, and they're willing to do that. Frankly, it's my understanding that it may actually already be under design since the applicant's been working with a neighboring development to bring that to fruition. With that, I can take any questions you may have. Of course, we also have Mr. Ron Mizlosky here, and also Mr. John Conrad for the applicant can take any questions for them as well.
Questions, staff? Supervisor Lofton?
Mr. Bishop, it's not much, I'm not sure it's, it's a question I need to ask, but I wonder why the 10-year pushback instead of a five-year pushback? I realize there are triggers in there, but I kind of wonder why that, that's a, that's a pretty long extension for this, and I wonder if there's any rationale behind why 10 instead of 2020s?
To be honest, it was their proposed date. We, we didn't really get too much into why they picked that proposed date, so I'd have to leave that to Mr. Mizlosky or Mr. Conrad to answer.
Okay.
Other questions, staff? Thanks, sir. Let's see. Is this Shawnee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I will make a motion here in a minute to support this rezoning, but I just can't pass up the opportunity for the paragraph 14-3 where the evasion easement language was removed, that the last sentence left there about noise attenuation is virtually meaningless if you come to an engineering and specification, because there are none. This sounds good, and this is a residential development. Some will say this is an old thing for me, but it's right next to the airport. It's a threat to the airport. It will be a problem someday with complaints about noise generated from the airport. But the applicant says they'll provide noise attenuation treatment for all residential use, use units. So when and if that development occurs, and if I'm still around, I'm going to come to the applicant and say, what have you done that's above and beyond the standard best practices, engineering methods for insulation? I got that off my chest. Thank you for listening to it. And with that, I will move for an approval of the rezoning application 05-13.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Hess. Discussion.
Aye.
Supervisor Lofton.
Aye.
Supervisor DeHaven.
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher.
Aye.
Supervisor Collins.
Aye.
Supervisor Hess.
Aye.
Chairman votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is the EM Extractive Manufacturing District Height waiver request from Carmoose. My best guess is the appropriate action here would be to postpone vote until after a public hearing can be held. Mr. Williams?
I believe that's consistent with the terms of the ordinance the board passed earlier.
You need the motion in to postpone this till appropriate time as public hearing can be addressed?
It seems a way to get there.
And I'll, I'll move that postponement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Can I question the process that it will go through to do this and when we would see it again?
Timing wise, we can hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission on December 4th and bring it back to you all on December 11th.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So the postponement to a specific date you're suggesting be December 11th.
We all accept that as, as part of your motion.
Yes.
The other discussion? Hearing, and all of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Next is the Comprehensive Policy Plan Amendment, CPPA Resolution to Study the McCann Slaughter Property. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The property is identified on the screen to your left, the McCann Slaughter properties, and the resolution and the map are reflective of the direction that was received by staff at the end of the last Board of Supervisors meeting. So if it is the appropriate direction of the Board of Supervisors to move forward with this, staff would certainly take it to the Comprehensive Plans and Programs Committee immediately, in addition to the Historic Resources Advisory Board. So the resolution hopefully is reflective of the direction received, and the location map is on the screen to your left, which identifies the general location of the property. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions, staff? I probably, my only question is to Supervisor DeHaven. Does this meet the, the request? It does. It was my intent to support the request, Supervisor Stonewall District. Anybody else have any discussion? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the adoption of the resolution directing staff to undertake a land use study.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. Discussion. All of us in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The motion passes. Next is the Master Development Plan 03-13 of the Towns at Tasker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a master plan to develop 10 acres of land, the Zone RA rural areas, with a total of 49 single-family attached townhouse units. The subject property is located on Tasker Road at the corner of Tasker and Rutherford Lane. If you look to the screen to your left, that is a location map for the property. It's outlined in black. Now, the subject parcel is located within the county's urban development area and the sewer water service area, and the 2030 comprehensive plan shows this property with a residential land use designation. Now, the Towns at Tasker is proposed to be accessed via one en, one full entrance on Tasker Road, and the subject property is being utilized as a transfer of development rights receiving property and will be developed with RP residential performance, density, and development standards. Now, the property will be utilizing 49 transferred development rights from four parcels, and the tax map numbers are listed in your agenda on the screen, and that are located in the county's sending area. The applicant currently has the TDR rights to develop 49 units, and the remainder of the site, which is shown as future development area, can be developed through additional rights, which actually, under the revised ordinance, will be coming forward with a revised master plan to show the full build-out for 80 units. So I'd note that this is the first property to develop under the adopted TDR ordinance, and this is the master plan sheet. It's included in your agenda. It shows the entrance, the road efficiency buffer, the perimeter separation buffer for the adjoining properties, the rec units, and the road layout. So with that, the master plan for the Towns at Tasker is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the TDR ordinance, and the zoning ordinance, and the master plan is presented to the Board of Supervisors as an informational item. I'd be glad to answer questions that you may have, and Mr. Ron Mizlosky with Penoni Associates is here on behalf of the application.
Questions for staff?
It appears VDOT still has some issues with this as far as entrance.
VDOT is still, is currently reviewing the subdivision design plan, which is where the engineering details will be worked out. They did provide a master plan approval letter so the application could proceed forward through tonight's meeting. But in order to actually develop the entrance, they'll have to secure VDOT approval through the subdivision design plan.
So even if we approve this and VDOT does not approve the entrance, it goes nowhere?
Correct.
We won't be approving it.
Well, true.
But what, even if the master plan is signed, VDOT still has to approve the subdivision design plan. So if, if in the end result, VDOT doesn't approve that entrance, they would have to redesign and come back forward with a revised master plan.
So the project can't go forward until VDOT has given its blessing on it?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions, staff? Did the applicant wish to speak to the board? Are there any questions for the applicant? Advocate might be the wrong word. It's the owner or the master plan developer. Did somebody want to speak? Or you just want to answer questions?
No, I'd just like to make a quick comment, Mr. Chairman and board members. Thank you for your help. I was the first one back in the early 80s to come through the zoning when they changed it to residential performance, and that was a real trip. I might comment that rezoning probably would have been quicker than using TDRs. We ran into a lot of quirks and quivers, but we got them out and died. I want to personally thank Ms. Candace Perkins. She was really on the ball and helped me, held my hand through the whole thing. What you all have done on this particular site, you saved three, just shy of 350 acres of agricultural and forestal properties. 252 acres on Cedar Creek Grade, the old Brumbeck Farm, which is perfect agriculture. Matter of fact, I'm running cattle. 50 acres on Back Creek Road that backs up to the Cove and Rock Enin, which won't be developed, so it's an extension of that. And 40 acres on Hunting Ridge Road between two ugly developments that should never have been put there. So that's what's been accomplished by this, and I think it's a really good move. It's going to be a hard program to incorporate. I've worked with Paul Anderson some, and again, I want to thank staff and your all's support. I hate that it's, I don't hate it either. State law doesn't permit rezoning, Mr. Shekel, for when you use TDR. You might concentrate on, like you did for extractive mining, the height regulations, you might be able to hold it. You can't have a public hearing. I don't, I don't know if you can have a public hearing or not, but it'd be hard to have a whole bunch of people come here and fuss about a receiving unit when y'all don't have a voting right. I think you're opening yourself to a can of worms. Some notification, I agree, might be necessary, like sending out. We have to bring the master plan before you all, master plan to the Planning Commission. It's in the paper. It might be some notification to adjoining landowners what we're doing. I think would be in order. It's in the UDA, and it's in the sewer and water service area. It's in the comp plan, so they already, already know it's coming sometime. So I don't think it's a huge shock, but I agree, some kind of notification perhaps. Public hearing shouldn't maybe be the way. So thank you very much for...
Did anybody have questions? Thanks, sir. All right, if there's no further questions, it's provided for your information. All right, next is to schedule a work session. So as we usually do, we will try to eliminate dates first, and for me, that was the 21st and the 3rd. Probably the ones everybody else wanted. No? I can't do the 21st. Anybody else have bad ones?
I don't believe December the 11th will work, because we will be having a work session with the school board.
All right, that one bit the dust.
December, well, 6th. Now, I could probably make that.
Well, there were a lot of Thursdays and Fridays, and well, no, it was Fridays, one Thursday, and one Monday and Tuesday. Anybody have a better day of the week?
Monday and Tuesdays suit me best.
Mondays and Tuesdays are best for you. Are they bad for anybody?
I don't like the 16th or the 17th, Mr. Chairman. That'll complicate you, I guess.
You what?
16th and 17th, I prefer not those two dates.
That was the only Monday and Tuesday we had.
No, we had Tuesday the 3rd.
Tuesday the 3rd, but that, I think you eliminated it.
I eliminated that one. He said it was best for him. He didn't say it had to be that. All right, we're down to the 22nd, the 5th, and the 6th, unless somebody sees it differently.
Just have to make it work.
How about we try the 6th?
6th?
December 6th?
What do you all think? Was there, was there some qualm about one of the dates down here? Wasn't the 6th, was it?
It depends on the start time on the, on the 6th. You've got an HR committee meeting that morning.
Be 12, is what he said.
Okay. I'm fine. I might want to expand it a little bit, depending upon the depth and breadth of Eric's subject matter in our work session with reference to three topics that are coming also.
More than an hour.
Right. But let me, let me work on it.
I thought you were hinting about that.
Yeah. We're quick, but I don't think we're that quick.
So 6 looks like what we'll try?
Yes.
All right, go for confirmation, or however you want to handle it?
Yes.
Okay.
Board apprised.
6 is fine. Are there any board liaison reports? Hearing none, we'll go to citizen comments, or are there any citizens that wish to address the board on any subject? If so, would you please come forward, give your name, magistrate, district, let me know your comments, three minutes, please.
My name is Doty Stottlemyre, and I live in the Shawnee District. And congratulations to those who managed to pass the November elections. I did want to come up here to say that there is one dissenting voice here against the TDRs. And you guys know that we, a couple of years ago, were very adamant about the fact that while it could be a good program long-term, it seems to be cap and trade for land, really. You're kind of selling your birthright down the road. I do live right above the Towns at Tasker, so I'll be able to give you all some updates on firsthand knowledge of how it's going to be working. I just wanted to let you know that, that it's not completely a rah-rah session on the TDRs. I think there's a lot of things that need to be worked out on that, and perhaps that needs to start at the state level. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, close the citizen comment portion of the meeting. Board of Supervisors comments, are there any?
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Fisher?
I just would like to, it was in the public works committee report, but the stormwater draft program that'll be coming to you on the 11th of December, it's strictly a draft, but the problem is the state's requiring it to be submitted by, I think it's December the 15th. So it's not like a final document you're getting. It'll probably change again, but I just thought I'd give you a heads up, and you're supposed to get that before the 11th meeting, because you'll, it'll be fun reading for you.
How long is it?
You need to take an evening and...
Don't wait till night before.
Play some loud music so you don't fall asleep, but it's going to be quite extensive.
Exciting, right?
Yes.
Yes. One evening, you say?
Start about 6:00 and quit about 2:00 in the morning, you might make it.
Chance. Yeah, exactly.
Any other comments?
Considering Supervisor Fisher's glowing endorsement of the entertainment factor, maybe we should have it early for an opportunity to review.
Well...
We're going to do our best.
I understand that this is a tough, tough issue.
Well, we were, the subcommittee was supposed to meet this Friday, but due to some more changes by the state, our staff can't get it ready by Friday, because they've changed it again. So staff's trying to get the subcommittee together as soon as they can implement the new changes.
What do you think will happen? It'll be labeled a draft, and then on the night...
well, by March, but then it's implemented July 1, 2014 is when it has to go into effect.
A final action item would be in the spring, probably.
Yes. I just wanted to give you a heads-up.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other Board of Supervisors comments?
Mr. Chairman, move for...
Chairman? We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Fisher. All is in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Meeting adjourned.